This is a board work session, learning session on demographics. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Hunt-Relly.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We had an informal presentation to the board and the community on the initial demographic study. As you know, Dennis Chisar from T-First International came and shared the results, initial results of that demographic study. And then the board requested a little bit more time to have more conversation about what the trends are with the demographics. Our goal tonight is just, you have plenty of time to look through the report. It's pretty comprehensive, but it has great graphics, great information, I think, really thorough way of presenting what the trends are within our district. And as we stated earlier, there are not a lot of surprises. It really matches well with what our predictions were three years ago and what some of the other demographic studies we've had have been. You also had a Washington County census that you had a conversation with about at the last school board meeting, which the findings from Washington County also align with this very well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dennis.
Well, thank you, Ford, members and Superintendent Cabinet. Hopefully, this time is a chance for you for clarifying questions or understanding. As you know, the findings that we, the data that we went through contain many different variables, both census, typical overall census and demographics about population overall, about your student enrollment trends, resident birth trends. We took a look at the yield analysis and housing dwelling type developments since the 1940s in the district and how it's developed over time. We also have analyzed and tracked both the active and the future housing developments across the district and estimated yields of those by school and by grade. And then finally went into market share analysis that you currently, this past year, have had within the district. And you rolled those all together and you try, we tried to provide you with a prediction. I would offer you, this is part of the service that we provide for school districts, is to assist school districts to move into a proactive stance in looking at enrollment rather than always looking back. So part of this, several times a year, we will be coming back to administration with reports as we see developments develop, as we take a look at new student enrollment. So we're trying to be, work with you on an ongoing basis, looking forward, so that you get information and trends, both alerts and confirmation and changes as they happen, rather than looking back two years later and say, why did it happen? More and more districts are asking us to, that's why we call it enrollment intelligence. Help us turn this data into intelligence so that we make decisions forward. My example of that with you, if you remember, when I suggested at the previous presentation that right now, you should think that it's, that it's June 2022. Because it takes four years to respond in a major way. And many times, that framing helps Ford think out, yes, we should be thinking out four years, three to four years, because it takes that long for decisions and changes, especially on a facility, of a major facility capacity development to occur. So you should be aware of that. So I'm not gonna, as you know, I just thought, there's lots of information. I was gonna open it up to you, whether the key questions, or findings, or interpretation that you had from your own reflection and review of the data. The board chair will manage.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
A question I had, Dennis, as I look through this, is there's no mention at all of the early childhood family center or additional pre-K students in each of our seven elementary schools. And I thought, because it relates to present building usage or predictive value. Comment?
Comment? If, what do we typically do, what we call a 101 or first level analysis for, it is a K-12. And then we find out from the district, what is it that you want us to study that, from the first review, is the most important? So yes, we have some districts that are asking us to dive into K-12. As an example, we have a districts that are asking us to monitor specific areas where housing has not turned over for 20 years, and they want us to monitor home sales on a regular basis, waiting for turnover. So it's what we would call study areas moving forward. So in this initial, we take the K-12 because that's where the districts have a tendency to have longitudinal data, and the data is a little bit more of what I would call stable. But if you want, if the district wanted us to look at pre-K as programming market and the impact on facilities, and that's where we would sit down and do that. So the answer is no, it's not here, and it could be. This is a typical, we call the 101. This is the starting report.
Okay. All right. Did you want to finish that, Mike?
No.
Comment again?
When I look at it, like, for example, one of the things I did is I went to an earlier report that we get in October, and Kristen puts it together for us. And one of the reasons we expanded pre-K was the retention rate, especially if you're out trying to capture once people are in the building. And we've done pretty well on those retention rates. I think the quote here in that document is 85, 86 percent. And we recently expanded it to all our elementaries, including the EFC, FC. And so I'm saying, it just seems to me like another useful tool.
To be able to, yeah, I'm taking, yeah, taking notes.
Jen?
Okay, I, thank you. I had, yeah, I just had a, to your point that you brought up a minute ago, kind of a macro level question with regards to your process. Because, you know, I'm acutely hypersensitive to Lake Elmo and living there and just been a planning commissioner for a decade, so I'm very, very sensitive to the growth patterns in Lake Elmo and how they fluctuate and how they're fluctuating all the time. And my concern is that Lake Elmo in particular is such a key area that you're focusing on, right? I mean, for every reason under the sun. And I guess a specific question and/or concern I have is, how might you look at a community like Lake Elmo as a little bit different, maybe, than some of the other communities that don't have such fluctuation, don't have such heavily changing dynamics within their community? And I, and by saying that, like, an adjunct to that comment is, this is an election year as well for Lake Elmo, and
Things change.
Everything can turn, yeah, everything can go.
Things can change.
So, you know, how do you deal with that? You know, either, I'm sure you deal with this. So how might you deal with that here?
Well, I would say we deal with it by monitoring it on a regular basis. So when we say we're taking a look at housing sales and starts and stuff like that, we're doing that on a quarterly basis. Okay?
Okay.
And part of that is on the ground. It's actually on the ground, looking at developments. And we also, you might not be shocked, we, when we're working with clients, we are monitoring you on social media all the time. Okay? So we're, and I'll give you an example, without getting into specifics, we're working with another district in another state, which just had our election yesterday. And they flipped parties for the first time in 30 years. I got the call at about 6:30 this morning from one of my staff, said, this is going to change what's happening over here. Are you aware of it? Have you called the client?
Okay, okay.
So we're monitoring many things that happen, and we realize that, especially with development, that it's a political, it's an economic, what would happen if in one of your communities, and this is one we're working with, there's a major change in, an employer says, I'm now coming into town and I'm building.
Right.
Okay, how quickly does that occur and that impact? So that's why we're, our suggestion is, is that you do this proactively and you monitor it versus wait and then look back.
Okay.
But this is where you would say, the board or the superintendent would say, here's a specific area that we want a little bit more focus. What we say to clients, it's not efficient for you to say, focus on everything all the time. What are the areas that we believe are, have the probability of change the most? Those are the ones we focus on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So similar to that, when you look at the building types of developments and their senior living, which won't yield kids, but the houses that those people are moving out of will likely yield kids.
Yes.
Do you take that into consideration at all?
Well, that is the example I gave a little bit earlier to Mike's question, which was, we have clients that are specifically asking us to monitor those areas where there hasn't been, where there's low home sales and there's high concentrations of people 65 and above, for example, that we could say, if there's an area, if we begin to see increased home sales, yes, you can begin to say, because, especially if they're of a lower level, they have a tendency to draw younger families.
And that's what I've been hearing from realtors, is that families want to come, but seniors are staying in their homes because we don't have senior, we don't have enough senior housing.
And I would just offer for you is, those neighborhoods, the language, whether you like it or against, the flipping, three years. You can see neighborhoods flip because of home sales, actually quite quickly. So that's why you monitor, you watch. Because one home sale isn't, but what happens if you say, wait a minute, 10 homes have just sold in six months, and 10 homes have not sold in six months at this price level in five years? Then the flag goes up, you know, well, wait a minute, if it hits 20 homes, then what we also do, just so you know, is we're, we work with the district. So what happens if they start getting calls and we ask, where are the calls coming from or stop in, in the enrollment center? Oh, they're coming from these addresses. Hmm, those are addresses that have just, that's the sort of thing we get into behind the scenes.
And that's the thing we would have to ask more, that's not part of our initial.
What we do is, that sort of monitoring is part of our agreement.
Okay.
If we, if we're asked to do studies that go beyond that agreement, then what we do is we identify it, and it's either agreed upon work order or not. So I'll give you an example, we're just working, the client that asks us, has asked us to spend, has asked us to increase and start working with a county in addition to the school district. We just said, you want us to start working with county officials in all those meetings? I said, that's a different. So we, because that's sometimes what happens.
How do you, I'm looking at a page that does population and race demographics by district boundary, and you do 2010, 2017, 2022. How do you make the projection for 2022 based on race demographics?
The, so what it is, is those are purchased demographics from ESRI, the SRI, which is the largest provider in the United States, and most government agencies use ESRI, number one. Number two, it's a, those projections are based both on sampling from the community census and projections of trend lines forward from the past.
So you look at 2010 to 2017, and you say X percent, and so you look at 2017, 2022, and you
And we are not doing that, they are, from baseline demographics, ESRI does it, and then they do sampling, and then they look at all development that's been approved. So their, their projections take into account local changes, like if you open up a senior living center, right, then the demographics for that area changes. If there is a major development, that, they take that into account. What we add, is we add to those demographics, as we said here, we add live birth, we add your enrollment data, and then we add in the housing. So some of these things, if you look on this, ESRI does the first two lines there, US Census demographics is ESRI, the rest comes from you or other sources.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, related to that, when you have different types of housing, like
Right.
Single units, easy to understand.
Right.
Okay, if you get a duplex, do you count, especially when you establish the ratios, do you count a duplex as two?
It's per housing unit, just like if you get townhouses and apartments, it's per unit.
So if you had six apartments?
It's, yes.
Six.
Right.
Gotcha.
And the question was asked, because I did get an email with questions from one of the board members.
Sarah.
Sarah, one of the questions that was asked on, on housing yield, and I think it was an excellent question, the housing yield is the yield to your district. It's not the yield of all students. Because we don't know, we know where students, where students, the total number, we don't know in the detail that we have for your district where they are. So it is, you're, the yield out of homes, single family homes, to Stillwater Public Schools is this, and it changes by area. Now, you happen to have, you actually, in your district, it's interesting, because there's not much change in yield analysis by housing type, by elementary school boundary. I mentioned in the meeting the other, when we first met, that we're working with a district where the difference between elementary school boundary is four to one. So sometimes yield to the school district based on housing type differs dramatically. In your case, to date, it's fairly equal. We've already had a discussion based upon the questions provided, we had a team discussion, that one of the things that we're monitoring is the yield to Stillwater Public Schools in new homes going forward. Because my guess would be, is that it, we don't know what it will be, but we want to be assured, because if that begins to change, and that's going to change estimations moving forward. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Because if we do yield analysis without regard to you, because I think this is at the base of her question, it gives you an inaccurate picture of enrollment. So we're using the yield analysis based on 10-plus years of enrollment to your district. And that gives you a more inaccurate, but that's, that's where we have to track. And so I would also offer for you to answer another, I'm not gonna answer all the questions, but questions is that, our caution to boards is that, is that houses and new roofs do not always equal new kids. You have to be cautious. You raise, it's based upon the type of homes, and you have to be also cautious that single family homes can have a high yield, and condos and townhouses can have low. Except in new developments, there are sometimes anomalies to all the patterns in large new developments, where you might have a lot of families moving in. So I could speak of one area where we used to live, it was all townhomes and condos in one whole area, right? All the single family homes were farther away. All the young families were in the townhomes and condos because of the price of the single family homes. Yet if you normally looked at condos and townhomes, you'd go, I don't think there's going to be many kids there. There were, because it was a high development area, and that was the only lower cost housing available in that area. So that's where families were going with kids. You see where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But, but don't you think, it seems to me we have more of that in our community, it's the type of condos. Like sometimes there can be condos that are designed for retired couples.
And, and when they file there and they are approved, right, because of the structure and design, if it's a senior living, typically it is designated that, and we actually get that information. So we have some that are senior living. So we look at those and we go, unless that changes, typically seniors just don't have many kids.
Right, and to the point that I was making earlier, we don't know yet, if the seniors are going to be from here moving into those new apartments, and that new family is going to replace.
You don't know yet, although the patterns are, the reason why, if you wonder why, why senior homes, senior housing happens to pop up, because part of our market we serve is, guess what? Senior care. In senior care, we will tell you that there is a fairly high preponderance or choice or preference for people to stay in neighborhoods if there is a tradition and there's lots of services. If there's services and tradition, seniors have a tendency to stay rather than uproot and go somewhere else.
So what's the impact? You have on page 11, fastest growing age cohort across the district are those age 65 and older.
Right.
You also have, the largest generational group in the district are the baby boomers, who comprise
Right.
26.8 percent of the total population. Well, I think I know what the impact would be for levies and bonds, but what would be your broader statement?
My broader statement is, when you look at the fastest growing, I'm going to offer you a caution. So when you look at those high growth numbers, right, the percentages, when you, if you remember, I said, anytime you see a percentage, look at the base. It's a 29, it's a 30 percent and a 45 percent growth on 10,000 and 6,000 population units, right? You look at the younger grades, you have lower growth, you don't have the same numbers. But you have, number one, just caution about percentages and on what base. What I would say is, in your district, the impact is, I, for example, would say, is that, based upon these numbers, I, for as a district, I would watch where there has been stable housing, where people of ages, of older age are concentrated and haven't sold in 20 years or 15 years. We could, and what we would do is identify those areas and watch, and then we would watch senior housing for the pattern, where you see the pattern of senior housing go up, and then housing sales start to occur, because then you want to watch who fills in. And that's going to be probably, most likely, on some of your more established housing.
Which is, we've talked about that, because where we live is, I think, one of those neighborhoods where people have stayed a long time, not very many kids there right now.
Right.
But once it moves, that's my concern, how fast is it going to move?
Right.
And by how much?
And what you do is, you track that, because by tracking it and watching the trend line, we always tell districts, you have time to respond. It's when you don't watch it that you don't have time to respond, because many, sometimes you will overestimate how quickly you have to respond. Right? And I think I used the, I think I used the example down in Rochester, did I not, with you? Right? Well, that was eight years ago, when they were looking at, where do we build our new metal in elementary school? They just, I believe, are moving now to build the elementary stools. We told them eight years ago, it'll be at least six years. Why, you're adding lots of new homes, there are, there's very few kids. Your live birth, they were actually losing enrollment while they were adding all the homes. Because the combination of live birth and the people moving in those homes were not moving in with kids. We said at that point, don't confuse roofs, new roofs, with kids two years out, until you start seeing the actual data.
So I'm looking ahead to page 71, the appendix.
Oh, that is ahead.
I know. I'm kind of more like, okay, so what, now what? And, so can you just, big picture, 30,000-foot lens, walk us through, you know, at what point do we need to start making some decisions based on maybe recommendations in terms of, like, I'm looking at Oakland, right, and anticipated capacity is at 110 percent? Looking at some of the other schools, and just looking where the growth is, we know it's in the south.
Right.
So when do, when do we get that ball rolling? Or do you come with a recommendation, so to speak, in terms of?
Okay, so when we take a look after this baseline report, typically, we sit down with your administration and talk about, so for example, you talk about, so as you look forward, when you say 110 percent, okay, is, is that against the ideal use of building for academic programming? Or are you going to quote unquote, put as many kids as you can in? Right? And there's, there's different, well, we want to stick with ideal. Oh, okay. Yeah, you want to stick with ideal for that academic program. Then you're going to have less tolerance for going over 100 percent, as an example. The other thing to monitor, quite honestly, and we raised this with you, is that this is the numbers given, trend lines, birth and market share. You have capacity in your system for that, but you also have to monitor it. So what we typically do is, once we go through this, is to sit down with the administration and say, what's a, what do we think the strategic focus should be for looking at all of this? What should be the strategic focus for three to four years, five to seven years out? Does that make sense?
It does, yeah, it does. I was just, you know, curious, you know, I, it really resonated when you said, Dennis, just being really in that forward, you know, orientation mindset, that the planning can't start soon enough. I just, you know.
And so at this time, and we haven't had our, the next level of discussions, but typically what happens at the next level of discussions, what comes back then is, based upon this, here's what we think are the strategic focuses.
Okay.
If you ask me, well, what is it? I would say, I do that in partnership with administration, looking at a lot of different variables about what should we, what should we be doing.
Okay, thank you.
And to Dennis's point about how he, you know, we'd sit down, look at this, I just pulled this up, we're sitting here when we talk about Mike's question about early childhood. 2000, before we opened up the classroom, everyone, we had 200 early childhood students. 2016, 245. 2017, 273. So if you look on page 11 of this data, it says, zero to four-year-olds anticipate a 6 percent growth by 2022. If you do that math, that's 16 kids over four years. So I think sometimes you think, oh, this is going to be huge, and then when you look at those pieces with the projections and our trend, that's, so those are the conversations that, you know, after you share your high-level thinking and questions, then we'll be sitting down with Dennis and looking at specifics for our district.
I think, I think, from a, and I think we shared this the other night, when I was with you, you, there, I think I made the statement, is that you should be thinking in 2022. Okay? You have, there's time to respond. I also said is, don't wait three years to start thinking about 2022. So you have time to respond, right? You're not in a, what I would say, in terms of a crisis. But there's enough data and trend lines to say that you're, you not only have to monitor it, you have to be proactive, and it's much easier as a board and administration to be proactive three to four years in the future than 18 months. Because we've had that where, oh, we need to start, we need something open after next school year, and you just go, okay, now you're, now you've just made everything really complex.
My question is related, how do you determine, well, there's two, how do you determine ideal capacity? And then can you explain potential facility utilization?
So the ideal capacity, would you, do you want to take it further, or do you want to?
Okay.
Because we get the numbers from administration.
It hasn't changed since when we presented all of our capacities, especially when Kristen and we were handling boundaries at the elementary level, we prepared 25 students to one room as an ideal average capacity, or median capacity. That's how we calculate how many rooms we will need.
And with the reduction of pre-K, when we're two pre-Ks in that particular room.
So then spaces, if you remember Mark Drummer, I was in a couple times, went into detail of, he would say, we've calculated based on 25 kids in a room, we plot that out, and then we take into consideration spaces like to media, or spaces for music, or any of the specialists. That leaves us with a set of rooms up against the total population for that building, and that tells us, we think we need 17 classrooms in order to run pre-K through fifth grade.
And so ideal, so as ideal, then, if we're trying to stay within our class ranges, our ideal is very similar to our, what the capacity would be? It's not like there's this big, well, it depends on the grade level.
Yeah.
Because if you're talking, if you're talking kindergarten, you're over, because that range starts from 21 to 25, but if you're talking fifth grade, that now runs past 32. So it's kind of the average, and, you know, then you hit those middle, the middle elementary years where it's right in between, so it's the average of both, because that's the closest you can come. So do we have that, or do we just have ideal? Do we have ideal and?
No, we just have ideal.
Okay. All right. And then it's a second question for you, the defining potential facility utilization, or is that?
Well, the, what we're then taking a look at is, the potential utilization is saying that in the future, if, if the trend lines continue and these student populations occur, then this is what the facility utilization number would be, higher or lower. occur, then this is what the facility utilization number would be, higher or lower. And you can see how that changes across the district based upon, so yes, it's typical that as you look at that, that you'll have some schools with utilization going down, while you have other schools with utilization going up. That's very typical. Rarely do you have all schools going up and down together. It's almost always a difference.
So I think, you know, this was one of the questions Sarah asked about that. You know, already, we're getting to pretty close capacity at much as schools. So when we're talking about reducing class size, do we even have room? Is there even room to do that in our buildings? Do we need to make that part of our conversation?
Well, I think the question would be how much, right? Because when you, excuse me, if you think about when we went back to maybe two work sessions ago when we were here, and we talked about what would happen if we'd reduce by one student, and there wasn't really an impact. Two students, it was a couple of classrooms. It would have to be a pretty significant change in what your, your classroom size was to be able to, to have that be a concern.
I did, Shelley and I, in some of the scenarios when I, when we did for the last board meeting, I actually have capacities added into my staffing sheets to see where, if twenty-five classes got added at Lake Elmo, clearly, we don't have space, but I have put that in sort of kind of a tracking, in that modeling I did for the last meeting. Not all of them, but.
And I would just talk to you as a, as a general practice, if we're asked to do modeling and look forward from, again, as, from the thirty thousand, fifty thousand foot level, we would suggest that, that the district operate with the ideal educational capacities, because it gets very complex, and you start playing off, well, could we just, and it's like, well, could we reduce by one? Could we increase by two? What you, what you're doing is playing with numbers, it's not modeling. Versus, here's ideal capacity based upon educational programs we want, let's see what that requires. So my concern, or our, our preference is that when we're looking out into the future, you use ideal because it's a consistent number, language and understanding, and then you look at what's the response under ideal. Then you can have discussion down there. My caution is using all, have, playing with all these variables, just use ideal. It's, it's, it's an easier way of looking at it. And then when it comes to, okay, based upon that, now, now as a board and administration, we've got some design and some decisions to make, that's when you maybe play with the variables. But I, I'll tell you, we've been asked by clients, well, we want to model this, and we want to model that, and it typically ends up being, using the ideal, allows the board to plan. And I'm going to offer planning and setting things in stage is different than making final decisions, which is where you get into the more detail.
But so ultimately, the ideal is up to the local district.
The ideal changes based upon your educational, yes, your educational program.
In other words, if you were meeting with a different group tonight, they may come up with a different definition of their ideal.
I'm, I could tell you, I could tell you absolutely, we're working with a district that has a, that has a new design of an elementary school. Based upon that design of, that elementary school is going to be staffed, and will have a number of kids in, that's completely different from most other schools. Because they've chosen that academic program or approach.
And it actually, when we remodeled or renovated the high school, we did that with science classrooms, et cetera.
You redesigned the science classrooms to a model.
Not only modernized, but allow for certain.
And that then reset that quote-unquote number, right, that would be in those classrooms. So yes, the comment, is this different from district to district? Absolutely. And that, by the way, is, and it should be, because there isn't one, just one way of education everywhere. It's, every district has their own, and even between levels. It differs.
I have a question on, it's page twenty-nine, it's the housing and dwelling type.
Right.
First of all, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, I'd love if you used median instead of average home prices. We've got an average home price, total number of single-family home sales by years, so from two thousand and ten to the present, our average home sales price is three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Do you make projections based on, if that said two hundred and fifty-three thousand, you would get this many kids versus three hundred and fifty-three thousand, there are older people buying those homes, and so you're going to get this many kids? Or doesn't the cost of homes enter in at all?
The, the, okay, that's, that's a nuanced question. That, the cost of homes does impact. We don't get into that detail in our projections, we would have a tendency to monitor that, and I'll give you an example. If you, if you studied a bunch of districts and you looked at school-aged children over time, the typical pattern is that school-aged children age, the median household income goes up. Right? Families with kids in high school just have a tendency to have higher incomes than family and kids in third grade. And you get to go, okay, there's some logic, I can see logic in that. What we tend, what we find is probably, the way that we approach it, is that the patterns that we see that make a difference is, the tendency is, is that families with kids have a tendency to go into not the highest of income, but the lower. But that is, that is so different. So we're working with districts, I'll just say, their, their average median home price is a lot higher than this. Right? Like, over a million dollars. Okay? At that point, it's like, it doesn't make much, it's different, it's just track it. Where are the kids coming from? So we typically see, the lower, typically, the lower the value, you're going to find, and the lower the income, you have a tendency to find more kids. Or what you have a tendency to do with higher-value homes is, you may not have little kids, you might have kids coming in at middle school, in high school. The reason why we don't predict or pull that into is because the patterns are too different from community to community. So we'd rather use the actual data over a couple of years to begin to say, now we're seeing the pattern. So let's say you have a bunch of new home developments in the next three years. The question is, what was the yield by housing type, and was there a difference by value? Now, if we can go, we could go back and look back over ten years and say, what is there a difference that makes a difference based upon your experience? We could do that. If I was being upfront with you, I would question the value of that looking forward versus the time it takes to do it. But can you research that? Yes.
Would the, would the figure, the, the number of kid figure that you would come up with, would that be valid?
It would be valid, because you'd be asking, as homes have, if we have home price, is there a yield based upon home price that's different than home type? That's what I hear you asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And so the answer is, yes, we can, and we can do that. If we were asked to do that, my, my point to you is, we'd have to get into discussion, so what's your hypothesis that you're trying to look for? Because if it's largely against brand-new homes, I wouldn't necessarily use ten-year-old data of homes that developed across the district versus homes that are developing all at once in a new area, I'd, I'd monitor those. My, my concern would be that we would be looking at data when you are developing and the patterns are shifting. That would be my concern. We're looking at data, right, where homes have developed, and all of a sudden, when you start new developments and you've had a delay, the concern I would have is that the patterns that you studied back five, seven years, that they, they may not hold for all new developments. And I'll go back to the Rochester example, that was a good example. If you looked historically, they, they were projecting that, in historically, whenever they got X number of new homes, they got X number of new kids, so X number of new homes needed a new elementary school. I mean, there was a very definitive pattern set up, except that in a five-year time with all new development, the answer was, a new pattern set in. They were doing new homes and very little kids. And that's what, that's what we ended up with, then, is saying, we showed them the patterns, not by price, but just new homes. So the answer is, yes, we can do it. My caution would be about using that as a basis of projection. But by the way, I just talked for, I hope this is interesting for you. Because from a board and administration, the more you understand some of the details, the more you'll be able to use this as a proactive tool moving forward. Because when you do a reflection back, you actually don't need to understand all these details. But when you do a proactive looking forward, and we say, we've been studying these areas, and we're looking at this, you as a board and as administrator, yes, we know exactly why you're doing that.
Jen?
So just a gentle counter to that. One thing that has concerned me, and maybe you could speak to it, or feel free to disagree, is years back, and whomever was at the helm at the time is, is not the question or issue, it's when the population of Rutherford Elementary came in, and that is where it's, the neighborhood is Liberty, it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. So, A, for me, is learning about the good deeds and the mistakes of the possible tweaks in the past that we could have changed, you know, would it, could have, should have? And how do we learn and then, and be more planful going forward? And that particular area has always kind of given me question marks, and now I, and now I, I sit here and looking at, my children grew up with, have grown up with all of those kids in that, like, our neighborhood started at the same time as Rutherford, so they're all getting older and whatnot. The new population is not obviously coming in at such a rapid growth.
Right.
Right? So, given that knowledge, how are you going to parlay that into our futuristic thinking here? And where we're not, we're being cognizant and planful, but we're not over-panicking in a certain way, where we're popping out big structures that we may be in trouble in the future? So that is, it's a concern and a comment and a question, and a lot wrapped up in there.
That was, that was a multi-layered. So what I hear is, based upon a negative experience in the past?
And maybe it's not negative, just a big, just a good experience in the past.
The concern I hear is too late, that we, that the district is not put in a position to build when you don't need it, or be too late.
Exactly.
It's that beautiful little sweet spot. And, and what I could, what I could say, it's a, it's a combination, yes, it's a combination of analysis, but quite honestly, it's a combination of working, working together and doing some things in the ground. And, and so I'll give you an example. So we've been, we've, we've been in contact with your city offices, county planning agencies, the planning people, and we've been in contact with developers, right? So we call a lot of people to help get a good handle on all of this. We ask developers questions, right? So specifically, you, you've, like, you've said that you're attracting this sort of clientele with this sort of product, you know, what would shift you? Are you really focusing in on kids? What, what are you doing?
Right.
So you'll have developers, you'll have some developers that do specific things and layout and services and features to attract kids with families, and then you have those that may not do that. So sometimes you'll say, developers, yeah, we really are focusing on families with, with young kids in this age, that's what we're going for. So the, the question I hear you saying is, how do you gather information so that as a board, and this is a critical issue, that you don't overbuild?
Exactly, and how it impacts other surrounding schools in that area.
Right. Because when you build, it always impacts other schools. It always.
So knowing how it, how it does.
Right, and which I think is a great point, when, when we're looking at, because that was twenty years, right, that Rutherford was, had a pretty high population. But now, when you look at our schools at the lowest, at least the lowest capture rate, maybe the lowest capacity, it's those two schools that are closest in the north. So how do we make sure we don't do that with Brookview, that it's not just going to be a short period of time, and all of a sudden, we're, we're going to be stuck with two big schools?
And so, and I would offer is that that's why, if you're going to, is as a district, you're taking a proactive look, it takes a lot of partnership across both sides of the table, from a governance and a management perspective. Because you can try to make this simplistic, but it's not. And, and it does take a back-and-forth understanding and saying, okay, we believe this is the right decision. And guess what happens? I'll just offer you this. Anytime that you make a decision as a, as a district, it then impacts all the development. The only, the only way I've seen, and I'm going to use this as an example, the only way I've seen this work really, like, sweet spot all the time, is a district that we've worked with for years in Illinois, okay? Every development of, every development has to be a certain size. So every development is a certain size. Every development has to put in the infrastructure for an elementary school in the middle. Every three developments have to put in the infrastructure for a middle school. Everybody walks to school. The price of it is in the price of a lot.
Stop kidding, I'm like, that's not true.
So when they open up, oh, we're going to be building, oh, well, then we'll start building the school. Why? Because we know it's going to have about seventy to eighty percent when it opens. By the way, they've been doing this for almost twenty years. When I worked with them, they had like one high school, I think they have three or four now, they've got like forty or fifty schools. They just say, oh, every development is a elementary in the middle. That is a, but you're not in that place.
Let's get in that place. Why do you, I want to be in that place.
It is a sweet. But, but do you see, but do you see?
Right.
That takes it out? Well, you say, okay, that, I can see a look on your face, it's like, what? That's not good, if that's not going to happen, then the next best strategy is partnership across this table with your local planning boards.
Right, right.
Keeping you in the loop, because you've got to manage, you have to manage variables that aren't taken out for you. Right? So for an example, another example, Minneapolis has just released a twenty forty plan, the draft of the twenty forty plan, all nine hundred and some pages of it. For Minneapolis.
Twenty forty.
Right? If you're talking about the redesign and restructure in Minneapolis, start thinking yourself, well, if all that happens, where do schools go? It's a complex issue. The fun is, you get to play with it as a board. So, I'm just looking at the time, okay?
Question I have, and it's something you talked about earlier, and it was Sarah's question, basically, the number of kids who are born, and then the number of kids that actually go to your schools, and that's, that's kind of a wild card. If you look at the trend, and I think that's one of the questions she raised, use the same report I quoted from that Kristen put together earlier, and it's a fourteen-year history. Now, in that history, we went from percentage of students who were born, who went to our schools, in two thousand and four, five, it was seventy-nine point nine percent. Fourteen years later, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, it was seventy-one point seven percent. And there's some significant points where that, that rises. So I'm saying, even if you know where the houses are going to be, and you know the ratios, the percent of the ratios you're going to get.
The market share.
Yes.
So what we have, what we have done is, we've, we've taken into account, we use your current market share as a way of projecting forward. And the market share, as you know, we did that by elementary school boundaries, so that the market share and enrollment projection forward actually is shifted by market share.
Yeah, but here's my question that I struggle with when I look at that. This is the first year that we went from eleven schools to seven schools.
Right.
And so when you look at past trends, the base year is really this year, because the boundary has changed.
Right. And so it's, it would be easy to, it would be easy to quote-unquote, reset, or take this year out as anomaly, then let's see what happens. We have a tendency in, in this process is to, to leave whatever current reality in, is in, and then see if it changes. Okay? When a district goes through a lot of change and challenge, it's not unusual to have a dip. It's also fairly, fairly usual to have it come back. It's also fairly, fairly usual to have it come back. So what we do is, we just use it. The other comment I would make about live birth. Realize that when we use live birth, so a baby was born in someplace, you can't track where that child goes. It just says, oh, there's X number of live births. Someone moves out, okay, that live birth doesn't travel with them, that person moves. Someone moves in. So if someone has a baby in St. Paul, a year later moves into Stillwater, you have to, so live birth is not exact, it's just, there's best many births. It actually is fairly accurate in terms of overtime, we found, is that it's fairly accurate. Okay? But sometimes people mistake live birth numbers for individual kids coming to your school rather than just a number. And I think that was at the source of one of her questions, was, help me understand what happens with live birth, because people move. The answer is, yes, they do. But what we found is that unless you have an absolute mass exodus, it doesn't have a dramatic effect. But it does give us an accurate picture because of actually tracking live birth. And that might be confusing, but I'm just making sure that you don't think that a house equals kids, and you don't think that live birth is a number, we're not tracking actual...
But it's a supposition, a supposition is really what it is.
Yeah, we're, we're making some assumptions grounded in practices and grounded in some consistent patterns. One thing, and then we said this one in the report, your, 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 your market share has changed, right? But your market share change has been gradual and consistent. Your live birth has changed. But it's been consistent and gradual in completely different directions across the district. Your sale of homes and your home values, that changed. It's been changing. It's been consistent. Where we get concerned, where we said, we see absolute anomalies, like, why did that happen? That we can't explain. Many times we sit down and go, what just happened? In this, if we would have seen that, we would have noted. But we didn't see that. So we feel that the numbers are, we're fairly confident in, in the baseline of these numbers because the change has been consistent, it's, there's not, there's not wild cards, or we didn't understand why this happened. So when we looked at the elementary and the change last year, and you said it dropped, and we said, yes, it did. And it typically does. And then it comes back. And so just like, anytime you see those changes, or we're looking at private schools and charter schools and all that, yeah, there are, the patterns occur, and when we looked at, yeah, the patterns that are occurring here are the patterns that we see. So we didn't see anomalies or things that, wow, that's something we've never seen before. If we did, we would, just like the one thing that we said. The yield from single-family homes equal the sameness across your different elementaries, we said in the report, is not something we typically see.
Would you, I'm looking at your page 57, your market share analysis, since you're talking about that. What would be your, the way I look at it, elementary is, we're getting 69 in a digit. Middle, we're getting 71 in a digit. High school, we're getting 74%. So we're getting three out of every four kids coming to our high school. What, what does that tell us? That there's options in elementary that are around the area, and so people are picking St. Mike's, or they're picking Salem, or they're picking whatever?
Yeah.
And then they return for middle, and then they return for high school?
So when you have a faith-based schools in your district, you typically see an uptick. And either middle school or high school dependent upon two things, their structure and the faith-based systems, and quite honestly, sports and arts. So sports and arts causes parents sometimes to shift from faith-based system to public schools, let's say at middle school. Other ways of structure. So if you looked at yield analysis, you'd say, well, why do, why do we have a cohort analysis on? It goes way over 100 at middle school. Almost always, it's because of a moderate-sized faith-based system. Charter schools have the same impact unless they're K-12. So we work with districts that they always have this bump up at either middle school or a high school until a charter school adds the high school, then the bump goes away. So number one, it is choices. Realize two that we tried to show you is that you are, you have students here going to faith-based options in your district and to the west, which is why on one of the maps, we put in all the options slightly to the west, because they, we found that they were some of the larger numbers from your students.
When you look at homeschoolers across the metropolitan area, do you see them coming to the high school, or do they pretty much stay homeschool K-12?
It depends upon what I would call the concentration. The higher the concentration of homeschool, percent of people homeschooling, the longer we see that they stay K-12 in homeschool. If it's a very small population of homeschool, they have a tendency to come at high school. So some of it's just the percentage of whether that's low or high. We're working, to give an example, working in the district that has seen homeschooling drop dramatically over the last 10 years. As that's dropped, they started seeing more and more kids come, not only drop, but the kids coming out of homeschool into high school. And I said, yeah, the market is collapsing and the network is collapsing. So where you have strong networks among homeschool parents, they have a tendency to stay longer. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
And again, Kristen has this, but I'm saying, I encourage board members to look at this because the homeschoolers over that 14-year period, it started at 2.7% back in 2004. This year it's the same. And so I'm saying, it's almost a flat line going across. Where, where you talk, and I wish that were so, the students who enrolled in charters in 2004, it was 329, now it's 1365. And so, so I'm saying, in that case, and as you look across it, it doesn't rebound at least that element. And they break it down into a lot of other categories as well.
Right. And, and so, I'm talking general patterns, but you've had, you've had growth of the charter schools in your district.
And it is K-12, like you, like you said.
And it is K-12, so.
At least one of them.
If you have a K-12, then you're typically not going to rebound and they're not going to come back. It usually is those, so that, so both of your questions I could answer with, if you want to look at the alternatives, what impacts alternatives in coming back, it really is the structure of those alternative schools and, and that network or robustness of that. And you, and that's going to, that's going to impact you. That's why when we, we looked at this, we're just working with another district, which we just said, you realize charter schools can't come and go. The public schools have to be ready for the difference. So one of the things that we did, we worked with a district a number of years, a couple years ago, not a number, a couple of years ago, they had a whole, a number of charter schools, and the word was that three of them were not going to get reauthorized. It was three middle schools. It was 1,600 students. And we said to the board, if, if the rumors you're telling us are true, and you three middle schools lose authorization, you better have plans in place, because you'll have to react in 120 days. And some said, it'll never happen. But the board ended up saying, we'll be proactive, just to let you know. On May 1st, they all lost their authorization. They opened up three new middle schools in September 1st. Now, I'm not, I'm just having you think about that, that you've got, this is a partnership, that you think about, well, what else? You're not in that situation, right?
But we could be.
But a board and an administration, I'm putting this, you have to monitor.
Yeah, monitor.
You have to monitor. You might wonder what they did, by the way. What did they possibly do?
Well, Herberger's was probably closing, so they went into that.
And med COVID.
They bought all three middle schools. They had already, they had worked at, they had worked and were ready to purchase and move within 30 days, and they did. Now that takes planning to be able to say, if it's got a high probability and it does happen, and it has a high risk, well, how are we prepared? I would suggest, those discussions across this table occurred just over a year in advance of the event. And they were, we got to get, it may not happen, but if it does happen, we don't want portables. Oh, by the way, you couldn't put portables in, in that many, would that be accurate? In that short a time? So I'm just giving you the case for partnership. So my hope is, my hope is that as time goes forward, we'll, we'll work on where do we need to study. The board will be able to manage the governance questions, and then together, you're taking that long three, four, seven-year view, which is a good one to have. Any other questions, because I'm watching the time?
Can you back up just to pages 54 and 56? I'm still confused about the relationship between ideal facility and potential facility.
So the reason why, okay, so on these, these terms, you're talking about the terms on these. And potential is lower.
Right.
So ideal is, the numbers that were given are ideal academic programming. The potential is, if we had to put kids in there, if we were forced, what would be the potential? At this point, you don't want to put, so potential is, we don't want to put more kids in there. Rather operate with the ideal. So if we're having discussions of planning, I would say, let's look at ideal, not at potential, because that's not your preferred educational approach.
Page 64 might help do that. That's where my question was wrong, but I, I think you do a good job in that upper-right corner explaining the effect.
On 64?
Yeah. The overall ideal facility utilization is projected to be, the overall potential facility utilization is projected to be.
So you, you can see on the elementaries, you're looking, you're losing about 8%, right? So you could put about 8% more kids in between ideal and unalimentary as an average. And what I would, again, I've said this three times, from a modeling and looking forward, I always encourage to use ideal, and then you use, that's your planning, and then when you get to decision point, that you might look at potential as, as an option. But realize that's a change in educational programming. So I'll just use this as an example. When you went, when you went to grade school, how many kids did you have in your class?
Catholic high school nuns could handle a bunch of them. Serious.
Because they had the rumors.
Well, yeah, they could do discipline differently than we can.
Forty, forty was not, forty wasn't, that was like, yeah?
No idea.
Educational approaches change. Now if you're thinking about 40 or 42 in a class size, you'd be saying what?
Too many.
Chemistry.
Chemistry. Too many. Any other questions?
So just to clarify with that, because it looks like from that chart, we're at 98% in some of our secondary, but we are at the top of a bubble. I mean, we're at the top and heading slightly down.
And to realize, it's because all of that is moving through the system. And typically, when you have new developments, you don't have an inrush of high school students with new developments. You will have some. If you look out 20 years and you have large growth, then you have to think about how that is going to move through the system.
And we have room, because I think we'll see more 912, just because of the grade configuration. But we have room for that.
You're not, this is, this is a, I would offer is, if you stay on top of it, this is very manageable. You may, you're going to have some decisions to make. I was just trying to have you think four years ahead, because it, that's about the timeframe, that you go through planning, decision-making, and then building. If it's building or if additions are required.
So can I ask, can I ask?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I ask the question of you that I'm not sure, we haven't answered to yet? Based on what we were talking about, about needing the room, if anything's to happen, is it wise to take Oak Park off the table, or will that still be able to be reconverted to school use? You're not planning to make any major changes to use it for whatever the plans are that you're going to use it for, that if we had to have something, that would be a...
Could it be easily turned back to?
Yeah. I mean, we're just, we're basically just moving over there. We haven't done anything. And, you know, part of, there might be down the road, some things we need to do, but our thought was that if that would happen, we'd need to wait till this building was sold or some other, you know, to have the funds to be able to do it. But we're just doing a very basic move, and it could be converted back. I mean, right now, we have kids over there, we have special ed, and then we have our transitions programs and plans for community education programming. It's not that different. You, you know, it's changed now, evidently, but for many years, moms used their Snell Lake Elementary School.
Wasn't it Snell Lake?
Yeah.
Yep.
It was their, as their district service center, and, you know, rooms are cut in half or fours, or there's some things that you have to do.
They left the lockers in. Here's our district offices, but you would walk down the hallways, the lockers are all still there. And guess where they are? They're not there this year. Sure, childhood.
Any other questions for Dennis?
Well, appreciate, I appreciate the questions and the time. And just so you know, our hope is that from a proactive stance, that occasionally we'll be back at the table at work sessions, talking about implications if things change, we'll be back at the table.
Great. Fabulous.
I'd really like to hear from you guys to see what do you see as here that...
One other thing I wanted to share that I should have before Dennis started, is we have Barb Nickel here, and many of you know that she's helping us out with Chris, being out on her maternity leave. And so when you see things, if Barb, Barb's name comes through, and you, she can read all your names, so I guess I don't have to do introductions, but she's done a great job helping us out in Chris's absence, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And thank Chris Brightles and Tara Johnson, who are really helpful day-to-day work with.
All right. Thanks, everyone.